Okay, thank you. Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for May 21st, 2019. First item is salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which stands one nation and the power and indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I'd like to add J. under Old Business for EMA Director. And after that, approve that with the addition.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to add J., EMA Director, after Old Business. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Minutes of the last meeting?
I made a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. I did get through them.
Now, second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay. Department heads and committee chair updates. Do we have anybody that wishes to? Any department heads or committee chairs? Seeing none, we will move on. Old Business. E-911 Addressing Officer or Operator.
It's tabled for an executive session discussion with your attorney.
Okay. Warrant recommendations.
All right. So, we have all of the warrant and finance recommendations in there. Warrant and Finance has it, and they're going to review it for us, make sure that all is well. We have just a handful or so to go through with you guys. If we can finish getting the recommendations on there, we can start trying to put a draft together and getting it posted. So I think we're starting with Articles 5 and 6, the two secret ballot ordinances.
I'll make a motion to accept Articles 5 and 6, secret ballots as written.
Now, second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Articles 5 and 6, as written. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
All right. Then we're gonna go down to page, looking at page nine. So it actually starts on page eight, Article 32, to see if the town will vote to pay wages and equipments as presented. I know that there was some discussion regarding state rates, and we sent that information over to you so you could review them.
My feeling, as we, the town had voted to pay these wages for two years in a row, I hate to go backwards, so I will make the motion to accept Article 32 as written.
Now, second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Article 32 as written. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
Okay. So at the bottom of page nine, continuing to 10, Articles 33 and 34, those were tabled until the warrant and finance made a recommendation, and we added a line to both articles that say, "Said funds to be dispersed after a project list, including line item budgeting, has been presented to the Board of Selectmen to be expended as follows."
That addition works for me. I'd like to make a motion to accept Articles 34 and 35 as written.
33 and 34.
And 34.
Oh, I'm sorry, 33. That's why I did go back a page. Make a motion to accept Article 33 and 34 as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Article 33 and 34 as written. Any further, uh, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
Okay, so now we jump to page 12, starting at Article 47, and going down to 67. So 47 to 67, you've got 20 articles of social services. So these are the numbers that the Board of Selectmen moved forward. You flatlined, other than the 3% increase, so these are your recommendations. Warrant and Finance did make a motion on a couple of them to appropriate lesser amounts, and those are reflected.
I'm going to make a motion to accept Article 47 through and including Article 40, I'm sorry, 55 as written.
55, right there.
I'm, I'm sorry, not including Article 55, up to Article 54 and including 54.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to accept Articles 47 through and including 54 as written. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
Kim didn't vote.
Yeah.
Are you opposed or in favor?
I'm in favor, sorry. I was just reading something.
Um, I'll do, Article 55 is for the Acton Public Library, and being the Director, I think I would like to abstain from that, but I will make the motion to accept it as written.
Second it.
I was just gonna say, all right.
Need a second.
All right. I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to accept Article 55 as written. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed, any abstentions? Thank you.
Bult Lake was the last one? Yes, so Article 67, you said. So I'd like to make a motion to accept Article 56 through and including 67 as written.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Articles 56 through, six, through and including 67. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
The next article is 68. This is for the $25,000 from capital improvements for the renovation of the kitchen. Warrant and Finance was split, three to three on that.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to accept Article 68 as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Article 68 as written. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
Article 69 is the article that we put in, that the Board put in towards the end, based on the agreement and discussions with Sanford and Chapley, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $18,265, appropriate $25,000 from the reserve fund, and appropriate $40,000 from undesigned to total $83,265 for the dams. That's with the addition of the $75,000, which is your half of the half, right?
Right. Yeah, a quarter.
Quarter of the half, right? Well, Sanford pays half.
Sanford paid half.
And you and Chapley pay half of a half.
We pay, yeah. Then we, yeah, so it's a quarter and a quarter.
Okay. Oh, right.
And that ended up being more than what they expected to pay? That would end up being more than what?
It is, would you say around 75?
The 75.
75 is what we're budgeting. They don't, still don't have a...
If all goes well, it's all budgeting.
Oh, 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 I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Ready for a motion?
I am.
I'll make a motion to accept Article 69 as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Article 69 as written. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
All right, so the next few articles are housekeeping. Article 70 spells out the carry forward departments and funds, what's carried forward and what's not appropriated. 71 is to accept all of the grants that we might be lucky enough to get. 72 is to offset the undesigned fund balance for the Acton School budget. 73 is to raise, is to appropriate, not raise, appropriate $769,907 anticipated revenues, which is an increase from last year, so that's good for the tax dollar. 74 is to authorize the funds to offset, from the undesigned fund, to offset taxes. I think that's a good stop there. Those are all housekeeping.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Articles 70 through and including 74 as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Articles 70 through 74 as written. Discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
All right, 75 came to us, a recommendation from the state, but by petition for the abilities to authorize the state to issue liquor licenses for the sale on Sundays.
I'll make a motion to accept Article 75 as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Article 75. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
And before we get too far, the next item on the agenda is the road ordinance, so this kinda ties into this one. So now you had the public hearing on Wednesday, we had the missed posting on Thursday, we had one couple come in that Kim and I sat down with them and went through the changes. So I just need to make sure that, before you make a recommendation, that you're good with the changes that are in here. So the effective date would change, that's highlighted under E. You have the terminology under GA, and the chain, the associated, or association was fixed, Elise?
Yep.
That you found. And then 3B, road commissioners, went from plural to singular. Lankowski and Burke and Clegg had different opinions on whether or not the word "new" should be under 3, so we just left it alone until you decide if you're gonna look at the entire ordinance, because that wasn't a minor change. So those are the end of the... So I guess the first question, is that your final draft for this? Did you get anything else from the public hearing that you wanna?
I think we really did.
We didn't.
I think this...
No.
No, I think there's gonna be more comments on, discussion on town floor, but that's perfect.
Yep.
That's what it's for.
Okay, so if you're ready, you can make a recommendation on that one.
I'll make a recommendation, I feel ready. It's, um, I'd like to make a motion to accept Article 76 as written with the changes.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Article 76 with the changes. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
So just realize that I haven't fixed Article 77 yet. We talked about this at Warrant and Finance, so the wording needs to be shuffled around a little bit, to see if the town will vote to accept 7th Street as a Class B road only if Article 76 passes. Because if that amendment doesn't pass in 76, then 77 needs to be tabled. So let me change the wording.
I saw that was in there in one of these copies, no?
Yeah, no, I don't know, it might have. Are you guys in favor of that one, with that wording? Because I'd like to prepare this for next week's signature.
Yeah, with the wording that, I mean, it has to pass, so...
Yeah, let me see what I can come up with, and...
Yeah, does it make sense?
We'll get an official vote next week and have you sign off.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good. Okay, and we've discussed the road ordinance already?
Yep.
Flat Ground Road.
So last week I told you that the road commissioner was in the process of meeting with some people that had some history on the road, and meeting with the treasurer to see exactly what was spent on the road and what he had left to spend, based on that additional money. I don't have any further update.
Okay.
Okay. But this, this is, this is, money has to be spent by June 30th.
Correct.
So the work should be done.
It has to be done.
Has to be done by June 30th.
Yep.
Okay.
So this was just a follow-up from last week. As you know, we had an individual that requested some information on a specific individual in the specific district. I just wanted to go on the record for saying that I did contact the individual that was listed by name in the Freedom of Information Act for the request and instruction of the Board, that she had the right to know that. So if anybody's wondering how she found out, that was me.
Okay.
As I would want to know myself.
Exactly.
It's a direction I followed.
Yep. Okay, budget freeze.
Yes, no, maybe, all set. I gave you the expenditures last week to review, so you could look at the lines. And before you decide, remember, I've been looking at those laptops for about three weeks now. So I just want to put that in there, that the money is in my budget. My quarry is helping me pick out the right one. I have emails dating three weeks, we've been working on it.
Yep.
Other than that, I haven't heard much, no one's come to us.
No, I mean, the fire department's working on air packs, but that's...
But they can't do that until it's approved anyways, right?
Well, they can do this year's, that was approved last year.
Right, oh, right, they had last year's money, right.
Yeah.
I think their plan is to wait for the approval on June 22nd and order...
And then have the order ready to go, because he wants to get...
Yeah, because we talked about the expenditure of funds and how quickly we needed that invoice, because, you know, the fiscal year is gonna end, we can't pay out.
Right.
You know, so we didn't speak with him.
Yeah, I think two things, he's hoping to get a better price by buying them all at once.
Yeah.
And by buying them all at once, he, they're all the same, there's no changes in them, so... Yeah, I mean, we'd freeze non-essential items, and if there are something that comes up...
You want them to come before the Board first?
They need to come before the Board.
Okay.
That's how we've done it in the past.
Have the treasurer prepare a memo.
Yep. Okay, anything else on that?
No.
Jim fees.
So last week I kinda gave you some ideas of what kind of increase you'd be looking at if you were trying to get a better, you know, get it closer to what it actually costs. I mean, we can try that for a year, see if those numbers cover it, but then there's just no guarantee.
Right, right.
So what that would do is it would change the 10 and 20, the 0, 10, and 20, to 10, 20, and 30. So everybody would go up $10, including the...
And everybody would end up paying.
Everybody would end up paying.
Yep.
And we would end up changing locks and starting fresh, because there's too many keys out there.
Yep. Yep, I think it's the best route to go.
I do, too. So I'd like to at least give it, you know, give it another year and see if we can...
I guess it's just, you know, I, I hope that it's, I guess I worry about it on town floor, so even though you're approving it and you're gonna have the increases, there's nothing to say that all these same people that were in these spreadsheets are going to re-sign up.
That's right.
So you still kinda...
Oh, yeah.
Need the money.
Yep.
The only other way you could do it is to, you know, to force entire year registrations, rather than these three, these six, so you have a better idea.
So he doesn't pay for three months, and then...
Well, no, they either, you know, because right now we offer it, you can either sign up for three months, six months, or till the end of the fiscal year.
Or we just get rid of the three-month one.
Yeah.
Do six in a year.
So expiration dates would either only be December 31st or June 30th.
Mm-hmm.
And if they sign up, let's just say that we're in August and they want to sign up for December, we're prorating that, so they're only paying for August through December, right? We're not, are we charging them for, not charging them for July?
No.
No, just what they would use.
Yeah, and then it might be easier to do a follow-up call, you know, on December 31st, you want to renew your membership, if not, bring your key back.
Right, okay. All right, so, so December and June will be the only expirations.
Yep. I think that'll be easier to keep track of.
Yeah.
I think so.
So when you have your summer people coming in, it is what it is.
Say that again?
It is what it is.
Okay. I remember who said that when I tell them.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we may lose a couple, but you also may gain a few.
Okay.
You know, so...
So it's either a six-month or a one-year?
Yep.
Right.
Yep, we'll see how that goes.
Okay.
Okay, meeting policy.
So last week you looked at a draft, meeting workshop policy, remember?
Yes.
Any changes to it? If you had time to think about it, if you wanted to...
I was happy with it.
Yeah, me, too.
I think you wrote it aloud last week, didn't you?
I was ready to sign it last week.
I did, yeah. So, yep, so what you wish is?
Make a motion to adopt the meeting policy.
Meeting workshop policy.
Now, second that.
Moved and seconded to adopt the meeting workshop policy. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
And so you'll email all the committees and...
Yeah.
Oops, I signed on the wrong line.
This is a follow-up from last week. You guys discussed the question as to whether or not it could be, Article 43 funds could be used to reimburse for calcium chloride.
I did look to AWI for advice on that, and she felt that it shouldn't be used.
Should not be...
Should not be used on, well, she said that it shouldn't be used in the shoreland zone anyways, but she also felt that the statute was for repairs, not treatments.
What'd you call it?
And I, that was my gut feeling, is no, it shouldn't be used under that.
Yep.
Article 43. Is there a short name for that?
Article 43?
Yeah, no, I mean, no, I mean, when I say Article 43, people probably like, what is she talking about? Even if I would've used that 3106...
Statutory, the private road reimbursement, yeah.
Yeah, private road reimbursement, I guess.
Yeah, I gotta...
So people know what we're talking about.
Yeah, I gotta agree. I mean, I think the, the design of the article was for bringing the roads up to, you know, keeping the roads in fit shape. This is more of a treatment on the roads, yes, it keeps it, basically, it's designed to keep the dust down.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you can argue the fact that dust is fines, and with enough rain, it would run into the, into the lake, but that's what the edge of the road is for and the, you know, the surfaces beyond.
Mm-hmm.
So it was designed for paying to culverts and whatever the work on roads were, so, yeah, I gotta agree.
Yeah.
So, as far as AWWA saying not to use it in the shoreland, well, that's a battle for another day.
That's a battle for the, yeah.
So, yeah, I don't think there's any strict ruling on it that says you can't, but I don't know.
No, it says it's not, it just, it basically says it's, must be limited or not used at all.
Right. Shoreland is what, 250 feet?
I think so.
Of the, of the water? Okay. So, okay. Yep.
All right, so the answer is no.
No.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. And we added J., EMA Director. We were advertising for an EMA Director, that closed yesterday, and I think we got one applicant.
Correct.
So...
I'll forward his or her information over to you.
Sounds good.
Just one.
Just one. Okay, new business, absentee ballots.
All right, so the time has come, all of our election laws fall into place. Absentee ballots are available in the clerk's office, so you're gonna have two ballots this year. You've got your candidate ballot, you've got your two ordinance ballots, and then, of course, the sample ordinances, one for the road committee and one for the road commissioner. So anytime the town clerk's office is open, all of the election laws go into place, which means that discussion of the ordinances is prohibited, discussion of the candidates is prohibited, anything regarding the activities on June 18th, when the clerk's office is open, is prohibited. So please help us abide to that, and if you need an absentee ballot, you can either call, and we can mail it to you, if we speak to the voter personally on the phone, or you can come in in person and get one for yourself or an immediate family member.
And there's a distance to that, too, isn't there? So many feet from the building?
250 feet from the building.
Yep.
As far as political activities, yes.
Yep. So... So that eliminates the parking lot and...
That will include signs, buttons, bumper stickers, those types of things when the clerk's office is open, so...
Yep, okay. And there's a pole down near 109, is that still there? You had, you had a pole down there?
There's, on the, yes, it's right near the, and we'll deal with that on Election Day, it shouldn't, I can't imagine why.
Yep, but I'm just, just getting everything out there.
Yes, right by the, near the sign.
Okay.
Stick out there, and 250 feet that way is at the bottom of the, bottom of the hill. It does not affect private property, though, so if there is a residence within 250 feet and they choose to have a sign on their property, that does not violate the law, because it's private property.
It's public property. Okay. Very good.
Yes, yes, thank you, sorry.
Would I miss?
No, it's the Rec Fields. So we were gonna put it under Department, but that's okay.
Oh.
Rec Fields.
Fire Rescue Commission.
So we know that the fire chief is gonna be leaving the Town of Acton at the end of June.
July.
End of July, okay. So we're gonna start getting these people together, right?
Yes.
So according to the ordinance voted in by the townspeople, three active department members elected and appointed by the department, and you said they're working on those three. The selectman liaison with the department, which will be Kim, Warrant and Finance Committee liaison with the department, and that person was elected or appointed by your committee that you, the name you gave me. So Lois Mischuh will be the liaison from there. A retired or active member of municipal fire and rescue, so to advertise, looking for someone, you want me to reach out?
I think we just reached out before.
You want me to reach out to the same individual?
I would say yes.
Member of the public?
Is that okay with you, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
Member of the public to be selected by the other six members, so we kinda gotta get them together first.
Right.
Hmm, that's pretty much it.
It is.
So we'll get them together, get their appointments together, and then start working on a job description and all that stuff.
I think we have that.
But has the Board discussed, you're looking for a full-time, you're gonna carry the same piece over? Because I didn't think you wanted...
Talked a little bit about...
That's why I was gonna bring the job description, let you review it.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, anything else on that?
No.
Nope, okay. Um, let's see, okay, we added...
Dee.
Added Dee.
Yes. Yes. So we have a gentleman that was gonna give us a history on the Rec Fields.
Oh, okay.
As we've had a lot of talk going on about them, he did call me several weeks ago to get on the agenda, this is the night I asked him to come. He is Dee, it's just not printed there.
Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Walter Moss.
Come right up to the podium, please.
Okay, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Walter Moss, I am the former president of the Recreation Department and former Chair of the Recreational Land Development Committee. First off, I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Selectmen for allowing me to speak to this issue, and specifically to Kim, thank you for inviting me. I'm here to speak to the history and some of the existing conditions at the Rec Fields on 109, the Ball Fields. First off, I would ask that you bear with me a little, because I'm sort of dealing with the perfect storm here, I'm just today turning the corner on illness, and I'm like compassionate to a fault, and I'm, public speaking is not one of my, definitely not one of my attributes. But as you know, we've been dealing with some issues at the Rec Fields. I had the opportunity to attend a rec meeting, and where the issues came up a little bit, and so I just wanted to address the history a little bit, and conditions that, that we have existing now at the fields. So the Rec Fields were, were done, geez, I think it was back in like 2000, 2001, so I am working on rec election from years ago, and I haven't been involved in many years. The Rec Fields were done in compliance with a engineering firm that did engineering on the fields. I believe it was DeLuca Hoffman, and they were out of, I wanna say either Saco or Portland. And, uh, they did the engineering on the fields, and we followed their plans and specifications. So, um, I'd like to, I'd like to just touch on some of the things that we did at the field. We didn't have any local permitting, I, I was in contact with Kenny Paul at the time, Kenny told me we didn't need any local permitting. We didn't need state permitting other than to notify the state of where the entrance ways would be and aprons would be done to access it. When we had it engineered, they, they set up plans and specs that dictated how we were gonna approach the project and how it would be done. Inspections were done at various times during the project by representatives from the DeLuca Hoffman firm. So, I will, I will try to break it down in certain sections of, of the facilities. Starting with the ball fields themselves, it was, the thought was to create a recreational fields, ball fields specifically, to accommodate the recreation department, because we had grown quickly, and although the school was very cooperative with us, um, they only had the facilities that they still have today, and we were trying to schedule, excuse me, like ninety-plus children and, uh, six, six to eight teams a year, and we had to schedule them around the two teams that the middle school program provided, and of course, it wasn't easy, but we did get it done, and so it was felt by the committee, excuse me, and myself, that we needed a facilities of our own. So we set forth to have that done. Uh, we had the backing of the selectmen at the time, I worked closely with the selectmen. When we formed the, the, um, land development committee, I asked that representatives on the committee be from the selectmen's office, from the warrant and finance, from the conservation committee and the recreation department, that was done. So, we, we had a bit of a problem in the beginning, and I wanna get this out there, where logging was done, clear cutting on the front side, on the backside of that lot goes all the way to the garvin road. And at the time. We, I had expressed to my vice chair on the committee, who was willing to take over that part of it, and deal and come up with a logger who was willing to do this project for us, and we in fact made some monies off of that, of course, and we shifted those right into the project. Every phase of the project was done under budget, I'm kinda proud of that, we went for whatever, um, volunteer help we could get, and we were able to accomplish that to a certain extent. We did have an issue with DEP, and, uh, for logging, we didn't, in the front part of that lot, that site rather, we were able to do logging there without any issues, but once you crossed over a low-lying swale area that was a watershed to Wilson Lake, you had to be careful. And it was done in early spring during meltdown, let's call it, from the, from the winter, and I cautioned the logger and the vice chair that if we reached a certain point where the ground was now thawing, that you couldn't cross that swale. However, to my dismay, it was done by the logger. I got there one morning, they had already trampled out through there, I'm sorry, forgive me, they had already trampled through there, and I just want everything upfront here, I, I, I hold no ill will towards anybody, I'm not trying to degrade anybody, but it was done. So, uh, someone from Wilson Lake Association noticed that the swale goes down, filters out over a wide area, and then becomes a small, let's call it a creek, down near Wilson on that end of it, they noticed some silt running in the water, so they, they called DEP. Representative Nate Greg Bean met with myself and Dean Knight, who was a selectman at the time and on my committee, and he tested the water above our site and the water down there, and he did detect a certain amount of silt being run off. So as a result, the logger was fined five hundred dollars, we were fined five hundred dollars, I was very upset over that, however, I was being told by selectmen not to, you know, overreact, it's not that big a deal, we'll pay the fine, we'll move on. We held the project up, we did necessary things that we had to do, we, we, uh, put hay bales across and across that, where it spread out widely, and they were satisfied with that. At that point, I was checking into whether we needed to do a tier one or tier two or tier three inspection or permitting with DEP. And I held the project up for a while, and I finally was put in contact with Greg Bean from DEP, and he apologized to me, and said he never meant to hold up our project, and that we in fact didn't need to do any permitting, we didn't even have to satisfy the tier one inspection. So, the field was designed and constructed to withstand a twenty-five-year storm or flooding and/or, and the pond, the retention pond was done according to their specifications. It has a emergency spillway riprap on the north side of it, which is the downhill side, and it has an outlet that would allow for a sediment to settle, any sediments coming off the field, and, um, you know, things that we would be using to address the fields. So fertilizer and what have you, and then once it reached a certain level, it would, it would go out the outlet. When it comes to the pond, I went down and looked over the fields, I, I have looked over them for the past two or three years, maybe four, and I became concerned that there was certain maintenance that wasn't being done on the field. The pond, I'm observing, the levels of water in the pond right now are, are reaching the designated mark for twenty-five-year flood control. That should never be, we haven't had that, that storm or flooding, it's because it hasn't been dredged, that pond was supposed to be dredged, uh, ten to twelve years, I'd be ten to twelve years, I believe it was, um, and it's pretty evident that it was never done. Uh, it, the pond was ripraped all the way around with a six-foot white berm, grassy berm around it, and it was actually something actually pleasing to the eye when you looked at it, it was quite a conversation piece of, I would say. Um, I'm concerned that we may have significant damage to the retention pond at this point. Another concern is all the vegetation and actual trees that have grown up, been allowed to grow up around the pond, that has to be addressed, in my opinion, and we can only hope that there wasn't too much damage done to the pond itself. Uh, these are things that have to be done, uh, I take partial responsibility for, for not alerting people before this about the issues. I was away from everything in the town over other issues, and, uh, so I am partially responsible for it. However, it, it's not been done, needs to be addressed, and at this point, um, revamping and maintenance are gonna cost more at this point, of course, because of the neglect, which I blame nobody other than myself for. So the pond needs that, needs that attention. So I would go to ball fields themselves, they were, we did test holes, and you went down through topsoil, which wasn't the greatest, to another type of soil, forgive me, I don't remember what it was classified as, and then you, four to six feet, uh, variation between test holes, you hit a hard pan. So, it was pushed back, we bought gravel in there, we compacted it to the specifications, it was tested, and was deemed satisfactory compaction for the fields, we put, we then took topsoil from the field, and it was taken, screened, and mixed with sand and mulch to make it a better form of soil. And then it was laid back over the top of the field, they wanted six inches of topsoil, I asked that they put eight, because I knew there would be some settling, that was done. And I knew, also knew, that we were gonna have to deal with settling issues, okay, so I had the contractor, um, which was Crawford and Sons, leave us a series of piles of loom that had been reconditioned on the north-west corner of what we have now. So if you go to that corner, there, it is still there. It is now overgrown with vegetation again, and even, you'll see a group of, uh, pine trees that have grown over this pile, you know? There are some areas that need dealing with, there is one particular area that has a lot of ponding going on, and that's what that was supposed to be for. So, I would suggest humbly that, that maybe we clear that out and you, and use that to address that low area, it's out in what would be, let's say, the left or left-center field, out past regulation, Little League regulation area. And it's clear to see when we get a lot of rain, so I, I would suggest that be dealt with. The, the original plans suggested were to have the existing, what was a Little League field, and has since been turned into a softball field, infield, which means the grass was, was taken out, and it was just made all infield mix, the whole infield area. But, in the original plans, there was supposed to be a softball field on the far northern corner of the lot, which has all grown in by now, of course, it was, it was, uh, cut and stumped, I believe, at the time, um, but it has since grown in. It was never gotten to, and that, that field was supposed to help the school with the softball field for the girls, direct with their softball program, and even citizens to use. So that's where we are right now on the field, it was all, everything was arranged to drain into that retention pond. Now we have ditching that goes along the side of the parking lot, and is designed to run off waters, let's say, from a twenty-five-year storm, and direct it down towards the pond and into the retention pond. Those ditches are, again, you know, over, have been, I would think, past eighteen years or whatever, uh, have not really been addressed, and so they are now in need of repair and, and maintenance. At the far end of the parking lot, if you, if you go across, uh, where the basketball court is, and you go down to where the ditching is, they had been putting grass clippings from clippings on the field there, and they're affecting the ditching there, that would have to be addressed, okay? Um, so at the point we're at right now with the fields, um, the ditching is not gonna work properly, so if we did incur a twenty-five-year storm, it would not be properly directing the flow of water to the pond, that's a little concerning. As far as the parking lot goes, uh, we're having issues with the parking lot. Today, uh, this year, we've had in, uh, an amount of rain here immediately following meltdown that is abnormal, we don't usually get that kind of rain, okay, it, it has raised havoc with our rec programs and our baseball program, I'm so depressed over that, but, um, because I do coach now, I came back to coaching at my daughter's request, um, but that's neither here nor there. So the parking lot was compacted and tested, the results I took, uh, by the way, all, every step of the, every step of the way, I stayed in close contact with the selectmen at the time, and more with Tom Gore, and I know Tom Gore has a engineering background, uh, however, I think it might be structural or whatever, but, uh, and I presented copies of every plan, every revised plan, uh, everything we did. So I went to Tom and sat with him in the selectmen's office, and presented him with the results from the parking lot, well, the whole site for that matter, as far as compaction, and, and showed him that we met, we met the qualifications that were set upon us in every area, and, uh, including the driveway in. And so, again, we knew we were gonna be dealing with, uh, settling issues in, in the, in the parking lot, which more so probably in the parking lot, because of the traffic and the weight it would have to support, and it was planned that we would have to go in there, recomp, compact it, and come in with new gravel and address it again, however, it was, and again. Part of it's my fault, when I left, I dropped the ball, in my, in my opinion, okay, I never, I, I did, I did, you know, tell the necessary people on the committee, the selectmen and everything, and was hoping that someone else would be replacing me to pick up the ball, okay? Unfortunately, it wasn't done, and I blame nobody for that, but it wasn't done. And so, we, we do, we are suffering from, uh, settlement and use of that parking lot, and so those issues have to be dealt with again, which, again, my recommendation would be to roll that out, compact what's there, uh, to almost a hundred percent compaction, bring in new gravel, spread new gravel, arrange the drain towards the ditching, and then rolled out again for compaction. And, uh, I noticed that they are, they are, uh, york raking to try and help speed up the drying out process, in my opinion, it's a good thing that you're doing it for one respect, because people were allowed to go in there at the wrong time and really tracked it up hard in there, and, uh, but in another sense, once you do that, you should probably leave it, not keep doing it, because you are in fact loosening up that soil and allowing it to retain, soak in and retain more water. It should be more impermeable, and so, and arrange the drain, okay, and I think that would solve a lot of that problem. Uh, as far as the ditching around the front corner, and it goes through a culvert that goes across the entranceway, and that was designed, again, to handle a twenty-five-year storm or flooding. So it's not, it's not done in the traditional way that you do ditching, let's say, along the road sides and everything, it is meant to not only direct anyone off from the higher side, which is the south side, um, and handle that and keep it off of that driveway, but is also designed to control the flow of that water. So it would go through that culvert, it would come through the culvert, and on the other side, there was a comment made, um, at that recreation committee meeting, that, uh, the ditch went nowhere, comes off the other side and went nowhere, well, it was designed to handle that twenty-five-year plan. So, you would, it was designed to go out approximately a hundred feet altogether, the first part of it would be lower, all ripraped, and with a series of check dams to control the flow of the water, and, uh, once you get past that first section, it does appear that it goes nowhere, however, the ditching of, uh, beyond that has been filled in by branches, sticks, leaves, and, and you can't even tell there was ever really a ditch there anymore, okay? So, th, those are issues that probably should be addressed, because they, it is not designed to just send this water down the road, it is designed to, to keep it off the driveway, control the direction and the flow of the water, so that's why you had the check dams in place and all that, and it doesn't have a steep sloping to it, alright, so, that's another issue that probably needs to be addressed. As far as the culvert itself, there was a comment made, that the culvert was dented and may be, may restrict the flow of water. On the north or downward side of that culvert, there is what I call crimping done, and it's across the top of the culvert, so, so, I believe that was done to, again, control the flow of the water, so if we did have a catastrophic flow through there, it wouldn't be allowed to spray out along the top, it would direct it down towards the ditch, and it gives some more control over the water that would flow through there. So, you know, I just wanted everybody to understand what it was designed to do. So, you know, I just wanted everybody to understand what it was designed to do and that it was done according to engineering plans. I would suggest if you can't find any plans and specs and other paperwork from way back then, possibly in the vault, I know I did go into the vault personally with Lorraine back then, and did put plans and stuff in the vault. I don't know if they would still be there or not, but maybe, maybe we can check and see if you have, because I have one set of old plans. They are the original plans at the beginning of the project. Every time there was a revision done, we got new plans. I handed them out to the contractors, to the selectmen, and my committee, we kept some, however, most of it's gone. So, I don't know if you, if you can recover new copies from DeLuca Hoffman at this point because it's been so long, but maybe, maybe you can try to contact them, and maybe they can help you out with that. But I would advise that we do address these situations because the fields and the parking area are going to continue to get worse. The pond is in desperate need of dredging and repairs or maintenance, okay? So, I just wanted to have a chance to bring all that up, bring it to your attention, and let everybody know what the plans were for the field and what the existing conditions are and may need addressing. I will let you handle it any way you see fit, but I would just hope that we would, we would try to, we would try to do what's needed for that field. Myself, I have a personal place in my heart for the whole project and what it was meant to do for the kids. So, that's basically all I wanted to bring up today, okay?
Thank you. I think this is all good information.
Great information.
Yeah, and I did, I just didn't want, I was hearing stories and...
Like you said, it's nobody's fault. I think that as committees changed, information got dropped.
Everything changed, yes.
I do remember that retention pond being...
And if anybody is the very fault, are you?
No.
Because I left...
I don't, I don't see that.
You pass it on to the selectmen. I mean, people, people change, but we can, if the information was here with Lorraine, I trust we still have it, so maybe over the next few days...
Maybe even Ken has something to say as too.
We can start doing some digging and looking into it. I guess that maybe we can sit down with Mr. Moss and figure out a timeline. So, obviously, so unfortunately, the timing for the, for the town is tough because they just made their last recommendation on a warrant and money has to be appropriated. So, that's, but if we can kind of put together a timeline of, maybe you can help me with what you think is most important, you know?
Yeah, I'm certainly willing to work with anybody who would be put in charge, or the selectmen, or any other department in the town, I'm willing to work with. Because I just want to, I just think the project's worth saving.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Now, this history was helpful.
Forgive me, I'm overly compassionate about these things, but...
You put a lot of time and effort into it.
And I also have some, some ideas and opinions on the recreation committee and what they, and what they do in town, and maybe could help them with some issues they may be having. I will leave it up to the, to the selectmen or the leaders of those committees can contact me. I'd be willing to speak with them if, and I would be willing to stay the hell out of it if I have to do, you know? But, anyway, thank you very much for allowing me to speak to the issue and just get the truth and the knowledge of what went on there. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
Appreciate it very much.
So, I'll see what I can find for the next few days. I've got Mr. Moss's contact information, so maybe I can find some time to sit down with him once we drag everything out and...
That would be good.
Start looking at, but I think some of the things that he mentioned, you know, even if it's just cleaning out some of those ditches and stuff could be done sooner than later, even if we have our maintenance guys stop dumping it in there.
Yes, I was going to say that's the great thing.
Even if we do nothing else, get him to stop dumping it in there, so...
Yeah, I mean, some of it's just manpower.
Give me a few days, maybe touch base, we'll touch base at the beginning of next week. Let me see what I can find in the vault. We'll go from there.
Thank you. Okay, we do have an executive session tonight, but we want to do the public comment first. So, I'll open it up to public comment. Anyone from the public? Anyone at all?
Hi, Joyce Backshe. When you were going over the warrant before on Article 75, which had to do with the sale and consumption of alcohol on Sunday, I just, I didn't hear the word consumption, and that through nobody's fault at all in the Sunday was what created this whole situation that we didn't have the proper licensing.
To be consumed. Sale, sale of liquor to be consumed.
To be consumed. Great. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, because, yeah, because the board wrote it, I try not to read it verbatim. I was just trying to remind them of what the article was, but...
Right, right. Just to make sure that was there.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Anyone else on public comment? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to, the MRSA is not on there, 405-6A.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved to second, to go into executive session pursuant to MRSA 405-6A. Do I hear a motion?
First and second. No discussion, all in favor.
There we go. All in favor, yes. Okay. Thank you. We'll come back out and end the meeting when we come back out. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll second that.
Move to second, to come back out of executive session. Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay, we did have an executive session, it was a personnel issue, no decisions were made while we're in there, and nothing's going to be discussed from that point on. We've already done public comment, announcements, the MA director, we've already, that's ended as of yesterday. Transportation will be closed on May 27th on Memorial Day. Paving deadline is out right now, paving bids are out right now, the deadline is June 4th. Anything else?
Library is having a book bake and plant sale on Saturday, June 8th from 9:00 to 12:00. We'll give you books to donate, we'd love to have them.
Do you have anything else?
I have books.
Do you?
All right, there you go.
Yep, okay, nothing else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Good night, all.